At this time, I'd like to call to order the Human Services Committee if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if the clerk could take the roll, please.
Commissioner Angie.
Present.
Commissioner Torello.
Present.
Commissioner Zeller. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembach.
Here.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Citizens wishing to be heard tonight. First, we have Dawn Falk, followed by LeAnn Klink.
Good evening. Dawn Falk, we're here in township. I'm on the Advisory Board of Health. We are here on the Advisory Board of Health to serve the public with integrity and respect. That is our duty. Yet, at the last Advisory Board of Health meeting on September the 17th, 2025, a fellow member crossed a line so severe that it cannot go unanswered, calling for the assassination of fellow board members who did not attend that meeting and then singling them out by name is not just words, it is a threat. It is dangerous. It violates every ethical, civic, and moral standard of public service. Also of note, during public comment at that same meeting, Vicky Blackburn also mentioned the word assassination twice during her comments, though she eventually admitted that using that word at this particular time was not a good word choice. We cannot dismiss such language as careless or rhetorical. We live in a time when violent words too often spill into violent acts. Just last month, Charlie Kirk was murdered while speaking on a college campus. A sobering reminder that rhetoric can ignite real harm. When violence is normalized in speech, it becomes easier to excuse an action. That is something that we cannot allow in this chamber. As Commissioners of this Board, your duty is to protect the health and safety of this community, and that includes ensuring that every person who steps into this room feels safe, respected, and free from intimidation. Words of violence destroy that trust. They degrade this Board, they endanger its members, and they weaken the confidence of the public that you serve. Therefore, I ask the Board of Commissioners to act decisively, to condemn without hesitation any language that calls for violence, to review and enforce the Board of Commissioners and the Advisory Board of Health Code of Conduct so threats are never tolerated, to require accountability and consequences for the member who used these words. Silence in the face of such behavior is complicity. We must show the community that the Board of Commissioners takes this matter seriously and that this Board upholds standards of civility that we will not allow this Board to become a place where violent rhetoric is excused. Commissioners, words matter. They build trust or they destroy it. Tonight, let us choose accountability, safety, and respect. Let us make it clear in word and in deed that calls for violence have no home here. Thank you.
LeAnn Klink, followed by Libby Prill.
LeAnn Klink, report here. I would like to address the Board of Commissioners with a concern I have regarding the Advisory Board of Health meeting on 9/17/2025. While I was not in attendance due to a work conflict, I did watch the meeting on YouTube later that day and review the legal transcript of the meeting. There are a few things I would like to mention. I observed that ABOH member Kevin Watkins had engaged in repeated behavior that was disrespectful, inappropriate, and unprofessional during the board meeting. Behaviors such as assuming the absences are collaborated and attacking the motives, character, or personality of fellow board members. I would like to draw attention to the section of the American Institute for Parliamentarians Code titled "Members' Conduct During Debate." Number one, it is never permissible to attack the motives, character, or personality of a member or members either directly or by innuendo or by implication. Number two, Kevin Watkins' comments during the meeting regarding other board members on the same committee could not have assisted the Assembly in arriving at a decision. There was no quorum. Therefore, the comments were not beneficial. While such behavior is in line with his First Amendment rights, that behavior does undermine the collaborative spirit and integrity of the Board and negatively impacts public trust. I would also like to mention, while Mr. Watkins' speech is protected, that does not mean the consequences of his speech are protected. I hold no ill will or malice towards Mr. Watkins. I would, however, like to ask the Board of Commissioners to formally censure ABOH member Kevin Watkins for conduct that is not consistent with professional standards expected of members sitting on appointed committees serving the public. This censure would not remove him from the ABOH, nor diminish his rights or responsibilities as a member of the Board. The censure would be recorded as official minutes for a formal acknowledgement of behavior that is not consistent with conduct of members of organizations following the parliamentary procedure. Thank you very much.
Libby Prill, followed by Eileen Tush.
Good evening. On September 17th, I attended the Advisory Board of Health meeting where an egregious disregard of meeting decorum, disrespect, and personal attacks against other committee members took place. There was a poor choice of incendiary words made by one committee member which could be construed as a veiled threat. On September 20th, I emailed the Board of Commissioners my concerns. I recommended that the Board of Commissioners remove this member from committee assignments due to unprofessional conduct and volatile behavior. On September 25th, I received an email from this member addressing my September 20th email, which surprised me because I had not included him in the distribution. I contacted the Board of Commissioners on September 26th to express my concern that my email had been forwarded to the person that I identified as having menaced another private citizen and possibly capable of a violent act. It is my understanding originally that Lisa Beeden shared this, and I just spoke to Lisa, and she clarified that she shared it to Carrie Hepting and to Liz King. And, you know, I think the statement was, "I thought you ought to know." So presumably then Carrie or Liz, you chose to out my concerns to an individual that Lisa, Liz, and very likely Carrie also knew had a conflict with me. You knew that he had been contacting me in emails that had become contentious. Did you out everyone who expressed concerns? How many private citizens did you make a target for retaliation and harassment by a county representative? As much as I feel that his behavior is inappropriate, I understand that it's probably rooted in what he experienced in an unjust social system. The behavior of the rest of Lisa, maybe Liz and/or Carrie, obviously, however, is a thousandfold more egregious and has no excuse. You had to know that he would never remain silent and that he would confront me. I feel bad for him to some extent because you goaded him into making his own situation worse. This was reckless and it was deceitful. If you pass this information, you have undoubtedly passed other information outside of the Board of Commissioners, and I wondered how this has contributed to the issues at the Health Department. The public needs to have faith and trust in this Board, and you have seriously compromised that. I like this Board of Commissioners. I think that this Board has the potential to be the most effective Board in many decades, and I am excited by Dr. Nevin's strategies to improve health standards and expand health services for all segments of the county population. I encourage this Board to be decisive and firm in its commitment Okay, this is the end. To serve the public, and I encourage all representatives of the county as well as every member of the public to choose their words wisely. Thank you.
Eileen Tush, followed by Vicky Blackburn.
This is by Pastor Rich Bitterman. The bullet tore the air in half. A folding chair rattled, the Bible dropped, a young man slumped sideways beneath a white tent, eyes wide with the weight of eternity. It was supposed to be a conversation, but this time rebuttal came not with words but with a rifle. Charlie Kirk didn't get to finish his sentence. I got the news when I was at a prayer meeting, but I didn't feel like praying that night. My hands were still, my mouth was ready, but my soul was pacing. Angry, grieving, tempted. Tempted to grow quiet, tempted to sit this one out, tempted to wonder if any of this faith, boldness, public gospel witness is still worth it. Because hatred in this country is simmering. It's not just simmering anymore, it's boiling. So what do we do? What do you say when courage gets gunned down in daylight? Charlie Kirk was no perfect man, none of us are. But he had a backbone when most of us don't anymore. He was a believer, unashamed and unafraid. He understood that real conversation only happens when truth is welcome at the table. He brought a gospel into the public space on purpose because the gospel isn't supposed to stay in a church basement or private Bible study. It's meant to confront, it's supposed to offend. It was not made for safety. Of course, they came for Charlie. Of course, they reached for a gun. That is what evil does when it runs out of arguments. It doesn't reason, it kills. That's the part that catches in my throat. The enemy wants us afraid. He wants us to see what happened to Charlie and backpedal. He wants the rest of us to whisper, to soften the message, to believe the lie that faith should stay private. But Christ never whispered. He preached in temples, hillsides, courtrooms, and at dinner tables. And when they told him to be quiet, he picked up his cross. Not a symbolic one, but a real one. Heavy, bloody, and splintered. When Jesus said, "Follow me," he didn't hand out maps. He handed out crosses. This is a war that we are in, and the world is not a friend to grace, but grace isn't fragile. That's the part that catches me. There are two worlds unfolding right now, the one you see and the one you don't. One filled with chaos, the other filled with crowns. I believe that when Charlie Kirk's body slumped to the concrete, his soul stood upright in heaven. Not limping, not silenced, not stunned, but crowned. He didn't fall, he crossed. Are you afraid? Do you feel the tremble in your spirit? Do you wonder if it's still worth it to speak boldly, to carry your Bible, to preach the gospel in a world that doesn't just disagree but wants you gone? You're not alone. You're not weak for feeling that, but you are called to something stronger than silence. Don't let fear become your theology. The cost is high, but the reward is Christ, and he's not a concept, he's a king. Heaven is not empty. Charlie Kirk did not die for nothing. He died carrying the message you and I must now carry forward.
Vicky Blackburn, Vicky Blackburn, followed by Sarah Dobrowski.
I didn't plan on talking tonight, and anybody that knows me knows I hate talking at this podium, but usually I'm the only one willing to do it. So here I am. And I'm really glad that you shared what you did, Eileen, and so many other folks. I saw them nodding about Charlie Kirk, and I think I referenced that. Well, one meeting, I said I'm glad that there was a moment of silence, and I did it. When I saw that video, I wasn't expecting it. I was shocked. It was horrific. I didn't know the gentleman, but it was horrific. Horrific. I can still picture it. The thing that I'm not affected by that, even though I may not have the same political viewpoint, or maybe I do, I don't know the man. What I observed at that meeting has been mischaracterized, distorted, and is deflecting from the real issues that this Board, I would hold accountable. First, I want to say, I started my remarks saying that I felt that a person had been, I'm not sure the exact word, something about a character A. I said it once. As soon as I said it, I realized Charlie Kirk was on my mind and that this must have been where I went, because I don't usually use that phrase. As soon as I said it, I said, "That's probably not the word to use right now." And then I went back to my frustration that we're not talking about the clinics, that we're not talking about the full board not being there when we have the Health Advisory Board meetings. And Kevin never, ever gave anybody any direction to do anything. I read that transcript word for word, and shame on anybody that gives that credibility. The similar situation I think of is when they talked about the Haitians eating cats and dogs. So let's call it what it is. There are folks here that'll say, "No, it's not bigotry. No, it's not racism." I beg to differ.
Sarah Dobrowski.
I don't know how many people read the minutes, because I know that I went through and read them. I also have them pulled up right now, and the exact quote is assassinating people on character. I don't know how many people went and looked up the definition of assassination. Yes, the first one comes up murder by sudden or secret attack. The second part of that definition, treacherous destruction of a person's reputation. I do find it hard to believe that this is not a attack. I do not know this man. I was not at that meeting. But what I do know is a few weeks ago at this meeting, his character was also addressed. I find it hard to believe that this is not also building on that. I find it very frustrating that this is what we are focusing on, rather than holding accountability when it comes to fluoride, when it comes to the outlying sites. Focusing this on respect is kind of ridiculous considering some of the other things I have heard on here. So if we are going to be trying to hold someone accountable, and I am all for accountability, then every single person in this room, every single person on this Board needs to be held accountable for the blatant racism I have heard in this room, for the blatant focus on only God. I'm sorry, you have not heard some of the things that I have heard. I heard Commissioner Rushing in that corner. I heard Commissioner Rushing in that corner making jokes about Indian-
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. Communication during public comment with the audience, is that appropriate? It's not. Please give Sarah 20 seconds back on her time. Let's give her back her time.
Yeah, definitely.
Am I being asked to pause, or may I continue?
You may continue. We're going to give you 20 seconds back. It should be 1:30.
We'll give you another 35, 40 seconds now.
There you go.
Okay. I just ask that every person in this room be held accountable. Thank you.
Bobby Jones.
My name's Bobby Jones. I heard about the last meeting. Mr. Watkins is a good friend of mine. Started with him on the NAACP. He is a member of the church that I pastor. And I was a little surprised when he shared some of the comments and things that was going on in light of this. And so I did look at the transcript. I did look at the video. And in all honesty, I wanted to hear with my own ears and see with my own eyes the lunacy around that. The first person that came up said the word assassination three times. So are we going to raise up against that person? Character assassination has nothing to do with taking the life of an individual. It has to do with you attacking the character of a person. So I wanted to see truly, is that what we're reduced to? When you hear that word as well, your experiences come into where you take it. And so you take it to a place for two reasons. Your experiences, and of course, the things that have happened in the past few weeks, or you take it to an area because you have an alternative motive. Now, I don't know which of any of that is the truth, but it is true that for a while, I believe there was efforts to remove Mr. Watkins from his position prior to his three months being done in January. So I ask myself, is this another way to try to excel that timetable? Has his performance been an issue? Has he done his job as the committee placed him there to do? Or are we just, you know, looking for a witch hunt? I don't know, and I'm not going to throw racism into it. But I do think there's some ulterior motives in light of everything I've heard, everything I've read, and in that, I've got to say, shame on you. I don't know any of you personally. You don't know me. I lean towards hoping for the better in individuals, but so many times we see the ugly in individuals. So I'm hoping that the character of Kevin Watkins isn't undermined. He has a passion for what he does.
We need to wrap it up, please.
He has a passion for what he does, and he does it well.
Cynthia Bankston.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Bankston, 3024 Thornhill Court, living port here in here. Anyway, I'm just, I was thinking about what would I say? And two things, well, two scriptures since somebody read what some pastor said. So I'm going to say what came to me. We all live in this world, and what came to me was "The love of many shall wax cold." Now, who welcomed Kevin at one time, in his face with a smile? You know, I met Kevin probably when I started nursing, not started nursing, but while I was nursing. And to this day, he is the same person as was then as he is now. He's a man with character. He has a heart for this city. He volunteers for so many causes to help the people. I know all y'all up on the Commissioner Board was elected by somebody, and we all need somebody to represent us. I'm going to say people of color, because it ain't nobody of color up there. But we do have someone that is strong with their words, you know? But what's wrong with being strong with your words? You know? If you don't say anything, if you be quiet, nothing's going to be done. And if it's offensive, I mean, you take it as offensive, maybe it's where you came from. But I don't believe that Kevin was talking, when he was saying assassinate is character. I think it was some weeks ago when I was here, a lady was saying what Kevin supposedly did 20 or 30 years ago, whatever it was. That's assassination of character. And another thing that came to mind, another scripture, it was "He who is without sin casts the first stone." So you all, everybody, needs to, you know, think about it. Think about yourself. Think about yourself if you was in Kevin's position. Making his words mean something that he didn't, he wasn't saying them to kill somebody or assassinate anybody, but the words against him was doing that to him. His character, things from the past, I'm pretty sure, I even thought about it, but the Lord says, you know, we don't supposed to render evil for evil. You know, I'm sure I could look up what some people have been saying about Kevin and find out in your life and tell everybody about it too. So, you know, consider the two scriptures that I said, because that's what the Lord gave me. But I wasn't going to say them, but I did say them. Think about them.
Gary Locars.
Good evening, Board. Gary Locars. I live at 5650 Willow Canyon Drive.
Gary Locers, I live at 5650 Willow Canyon Drive. Last week at the planning commission in Kimball Township, we had a man and his wife come in and they were asking for a special movement to dig a pond in their backyard. The reason they're asking to dig a pond is due to excess water going in their land. Over the last eight, nine months, I've heard countless citizens in Kimball Township all express the same thing. And they've told me, yeah, when we built the property or we moved to this property, we were told the county road commission would dredge our ditches, make our ditches deeper so we wouldn't have as much issues with the water. A lot of residents have told me, yeah, we weren't originally supposed to be able to build on this land, but they told us we can and the county will make it so our ditches are deeper so we don't have issues because it's low water. This man's going to have to spend lots of money, more money than I can imagine, to have somebody come out and dig a three acre pond just so he doesn't have damage to his home. So my request is, can we get on the county commissioner, I'm sorry, not on the county commissioner, but on the county road commission and with the drain commissioner so we can make people's properties not be hindered with all the excess water? That's, I can only imagine how many other residents are suffering with this. And it's just, I hate to hear residents have to spend money to fix something that they were told would be fixed by the county. Another issue I had, I was made aware that on the landfill issue, there's something going on at the hill where haulers are being double charged. So they get to the top of the hill and the company at the top of the hill is charging them additional fees to pull their trash out of their dumpster. I've got a personal friend, he's not okay with that. He's paying at the bottom of the hill and then he's got to pay at the top of the hill. So I asked somebody at the Kimball Township Hall and they were not made aware of that. And I've also asked people in the county. They were like, "We have no idea about that." So I know he's in the process of filing lawsuits because it's double dipping and he's concerned about that. So I would appreciate you looking into these matters and thank you so much.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard this evening? If you could fill out a slip?
Good evening, Commissioners, Ms. Hefting, Madam Clerk, and Mr. Fletcher. As others have shared tonight, I too want to speak out about the deeply disturbing behavior and language of Mr. Kevin Watkins. I have attended many health department advisory board meetings and have consistently expressed support for Dr. Nevin and the structure he has brought to protect the health and well-being of our residents. Unfortunately, because I supported that leadership, I, along with others, became the target of verbal attacks from Mr. Watkins. Once he confronted me in the elevator after one of these meetings here at the board, I also witnessed him publicly berate a commissioner. And when I spoke up against that behavior, I became the next target. His ongoing behavior, his anger, his hostility and pattern of personal attacks is not just this one meeting. It's been going on and it continues. It's towards anyone who disagrees with him and it's deeply concerning. I have seen him demean and intimidate others, behavior that violates both professional and standards and basic decency. At the meeting in question, I calmly pointed out potential open meeting act violations. I was once again met with hostility. His words and actions culminating in his recent remarks suggested harm towards others. They were not only alarming, but unmistakingly directed at me, made clear by his intense stare. Those were two, there were two individuals who made those statements that evening. And I am still in shock. To tell anyone to unalive another person in any context is unthinkable. For someone representing this county and especially someone teaching nursing students, this behavior is unacceptable and dangerous. Across the country, similar conduct has led to termination from healthcare and educational roles. Mr. Watkins' repeated displays of aggression, intimidation and verbal abuse make him unfit to hold any position representing St. Clair County or its residents. Those who excuse or overlook this conduct should reflect deeply on what message that sends about accountability, respect and leadership. To know of this repeated behavior and ignore it is equally wrong. I sincerely thank this board for addressing this issue seriously. The people of St. Clair County deserve leadership that models integrity, professionalism and kindness, not hostility and threats. Supporting this kind of ongoing behavior in any form is unacceptable and unforgivable. Thank you for your time and thank you for taking action on this issue. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any commissioner updates? Moving on to conceptual initiatives. Item A, Commissioner Samasco.
Thank you, Lisa. This conceptual initiative, item A, essentially is the issue of these comments that were made at the 9/17/25 board meeting. As board chair, sometimes I'm called to speak on behalf of the board, newspaper, radio, et cetera. Sometimes I'm asked officially to make comments. I also have the capacity as a District One Commissioner. So when this came up shortly after the meeting, I didn't attend, I received concerns and complaints from a number of people, citizens, some commissioners, some health advisory board members. And it kind of continued through the weekend. I did not attend the meeting, but we archive it, which we actually, there was a concern a month or so back about the Don Dodd Room not having capacity because the meetings were getting difficult or I don't know what you want to call it, but they wanted to have them recorded. So we allowed them to move up to the chamber here and that's where it took place. So I went on the archive, which anyone can do, and I listened to it. And I don't hear that well, but I listened to it and I did hear some words that concerned me. So then I reached out to a person I know is a service core reporter, said, "Would you transcribe that for me?" So there's no question for all fairness to everybody what was said and people can look at it. And that's attached to the agenda item as an attachment. So, you know, I did not attend that meeting. The complaints ranged from removal, suspension, prosecution, all kinds of things, you know, were suggested as the appropriate thing to do here. So I did look at it. The September 23rd, I notified the members of the commission that I would put it on as an agenda item because I don't speak for the commission on matters like this. I expect us to speak as a board. In a moment, they suggest what I think is the appropriate thing. We need to look at it. We did look at it. We're going to deliberate discuss it tonight and then figure out what, if anything, the board wants to do and then move from there. What I would do is I would suggest, in my opinion, as the District One Commissioner, as a board member, that it should at least be worthy of a reprimand. The person's intentions, his motives can mean many things. You don't know what people mean when they say things, but enough was said that it was alarming to people and I believe it did scare some people. And so for those reasons alone, I felt that we should at least issue a reprimand. I would not be supporting a removal or suspension or any of the other things. But the reason for that, and then I'll turn it over to everyone else, if there's a motion and second for me to prepare a letter or a public reprimand, I'll do so. I can submit it to the board for issuing so I can just have council review it and consistent with whatever our discussion is, just do a public letter of reprimand. But what I felt was that in this particular instance, Mr. Watkins' judgment fell below that which was expected of board appointees for the county. The actions I felt flouted basic ethical standards regardless of what you meant, it was perceived in a way and in the environment we had, I just, I felt we should at least reprimand that. The board, by admonishing that type of behavior from a public appointee, making statements that have the appearance that it speaks on behalf of the board, not as an individual and not for an organization, but you're speaking from this dais publicly, that's a little different than just free expression, you know, because we can't obviously and don't want to chill free expression. But there are some ethics and there are some considerations that I think that we need to look at. And for that reason, I felt that his comments added to or created a risk of social unrest, lack of peace amongst, you know, citizens. Whatever he meant, I've read it a number of times. I've made a note there. So these same people who are assassinating people on character, "Let me next meeting, let me hear you next meeting assassinate those who don't show up." That's ugly. I didn't like that. Who purposely didn't show up so we couldn't conduct business? For what it's worth, I think a public reprimand would be sufficient. That's not to say, hey, as a lawyer, we have bar association, we get reprimanded for things we do that are inappropriate or that the bar association is not comfortable with. So I look at it and that, it doesn't take away from the fact that as people said, he'd done some great things. Well, this isn't such a great thing, it should be reprimanded. It would be something that other appointees would see. And I think the public at the very least would expect that and I think that would be fair. But I'm not going to do anything without the board approval. So I turn it over. If anyone has any comments or questions, if there's no motion of support, nothing will be done. I suggest that a motion for a reprimand would be in order and that's my position.
I mean, Kevin's here tonight. I think we should give him the opportunity to speak. A lot of people have spoken about him this evening. I think he's here. Be worth hearing from him.
Sure. You're the board chair, why not? Yeah, absolutely. And I just see a letter. He sent some things off and emails. There were some things happening on the county email. And I know that he had asked for a FOIA and some of the things I had communicated on it. It's all great. There's communication there. So, yeah, there's no reason why he shouldn't be allowed to speak. You know, if we were to try and remove somebody under MCL 4511N, that's where, that's the actual process is you notify them of this contact in office. They can either have a public expression or ask for an in chambers or closed session. And then you can decide, you know, our board then would decide whether or not to remove them. I wouldn't support removal. I mean, I would just think a reprimand would be sufficient, but I think that's in order. So you are the board chair and I would just, don't have to ask me for that.
Well, I mean, I think he's here and a lot of people, again, have spoken about him. I'd like to hear from Kevin before we deliberate on anything. So Kevin, if you'll take just a few minutes.
Kevin Watkins, wear many hats, but the hat we're discussing here is a role on the St. Clair County Advisory Board, which I, that I proudly serve because I do represent a lot of people that in the past have not been represented. I'm puzzled, you can help me if I'm not correct, but I don't think there's any African-Americans on any commission board in St. Clair County, not sure they ever have been. That, and not just being African-American, male or person of color, but a difference in opinion, ideology. It seems like what's happening in St. Clair County now and probably for a long time, that a good portion of the population is silenced because you refuse to put representation for them on the boards. How I got here must have been pretty lucky for me to even get on this board. And then it seems like now, even before my term was up to be removed, and then Commissioner Samasco mentioned and others mentioned about, you know, three more, three months left of my term. I know I serve as a pleasure of the commissioners. We are appointed to cover constituents of different areas of the county. But it's, you know, a blind man can see, just using terms again, but everyone understands what that means. Can see the setup that if you're sanctioned, censured, whatever, then that pretty much, even if you have a little possibility of being reappointed, that would eliminate that. So basically what's been happening over the last few months or more, that a pattern's been set here to try to make sure I'm not reappointed, to make it easier for the commissioners to, some to come from behind the blinds and say, "Well, this is why we didn't, we give you a pass or why you would not bring me back to the health board." And I represent a lot of people. A lot of people will be upset. Who was representing them? Miss Cindy Bankston mentioned that very clearly. You may think that it's not important, but it is. Let me give you one example, that there's something really, there's an issue with public health, but because of my efforts and Dr. Gilman's efforts and others, and then a PhD from Michigan State who brought this up and put it out there in the public, it's an issue with the sensors in the bathrooms that picks up pigmentation, not motion, but pigmentation, and that black people or people of color couldn't wash their hands. And a lot of people, I'm a nurse and I was just determined, what is wrong? I would actually sometime when I'm in the rest area, call this white guy, "Hey dude, can you hit this for me? Get the faucet to come, the soap to come out of the house?" And he could. He snickered like, "Wow." I couldn't do it. After the research and finding out, that happened a long time, I couldn't figure it out. And I started talking to people and then they said, "Wow, that happened to me too, me too." But it's kind of embarrassing, but me being a nurse, I had to wash my hands. It's a public health issue. And to make a long story short, this PhD did research and found out the people who created those senses of skin tone didn't consider black people, didn't consider people of color. They created a public health risk. Shame on those people and they're going to hell they did on purpose. But I don't think there's people that bad that do that on purpose. They just didn't think of us. They didn't think of us because we're not in front of their mind. They're thinking of people that look like them. It's normal. It's like walking in a room and lots of people there at different tables, you naturally gravitate to people that look like you and then you get comfortable and then you maneuver around to talk to people. It's natural instinct, that is. So these people, maybe the natural instinct when they came with this technology, they was thinking about people that looked like them. So now they created a great public health risk. And I just basically, I-
It's not public comment.
You said for three minutes.
I said a few, a few minutes. So we'll give you a couple more, Kevin. Those minutes, Kevin, if you couldn't make your point.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rushing. This is Ms. Beaton's committee.
You said three minutes.
But I won't go, there's a lot more with that. And it's been addressed because I brought it up and this PhD did the research. The point is, everyone needs representation. There's good people there, but people not like you is not in front of your mind, it's not on your radar. And I'm saying you want to harm them, but right away you're thinking of people that look like you. That's where you need diversity, the word diversity. And of course, I love the word inclusion. I know I deserve to be there at the table. That's inclusion. But the diversity, I'm up there, I'm thinking about the people that look like me that has those issues. I talked to Dr. Nevin, "Baby, you can help us with this." Because that's the problem. Think about that one thing with that is that you think it's a big deal. What if I work at a restaurant and I'm serving you food? I went to a restaurant and had to relieve myself. I can't wash my hands because I can't activate them because my skin is black. Now I'm coming back with, you know what, my hands serving you food. It's a public health risk. So it's very good that people like me and the woman who did the research look like me that facilitate this. And now things are getting done for me to go to M-Doc, but now they're changing back and dealing with that issue so that people can wash their hands. Now, real quickly, I want to first say I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Hefting and Ms. Beaton and Ms. Angie, that they would dare attack you about emails. But let me just say the one thing about this, Mrs. Libby mentioned her name, she stated that. I always say the E in email stands for evidence. She emailed me directly, just to me. I emailed back to her, very, very much respectfully. And then all of a sudden she's going to cry, there's a dance, we're in distress. What is she scared of? It's the whole thing, a criminalization of black men. She's afraid of me, I'm a black man, I speak with my hands, you see that, I have a higher tone. She's scared of me, really? So I'm going to be addressing and prosecuting whatever because that's her problem, that she's scared of black men. She needs to address that. You get a constant, "Why are you afraid of black men? Why are you afraid of me? I've done nothing to you. I didn't violate your space, anything." And that's a problem, people. That's a problem. Then you talk about Charlie Kirk. Quickly, I didn't know the guy. Never heard of him before what happened. I'm concerned with what happened to him, but my passion is not the same as yours. About him, example, if your mom died, I feel bad for you, you're my friend and pray for you, but I'm not going to have the same level of the dying, the list of Cooper Rock's loss, the stages of loss that you would have. And you would have the same with mine. So how are you going to make me have the same passion about Charlie Kirk's unfortunate incident that you have? These people have it mad because of that and the word assassination, the etymology of that word. I said defaming me. Character assassination is throughout decades and who knows how long people use that. They would take that and twist it and state that I'm stating to hurt someone. That is wrong. This is, I remember one more thing of Clarence Thomas-
Kevin, I do need you to wrap it up.
Okay, I wrapped it now. One thing to leave you with this, remember Clarence Thomas, when he, what was happening to him, when they accused him, he was coming up for the Supreme Court, people remember that? When he brought up, what was happening to him was a public lynching. And, you know, it's hard to hear that, but it was. It was. And what happened to George Floyd was a lynching. People worried about what happened to Charlie Kirk, but I'm more concerned about what happened to him, when he was sitting there just killed with a knee on his throat, to die slowly. So we all have different passions of what happened. And then one more thing, you talk about, you talk about the words, let's talk about '47. You know I'm talking about Trump, the words he's using, the negative words talking about people and inciting violence and inciting insurrection. So please be careful with that, looking at me saying that the words I'm using is facilitating violence. It's dead wrong, people. Don't fall for that. Please don't fall for that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Ms. Beaton.
We're in discussion.
You gave me six minutes.
Libby, you had three minutes. This issue is a conceptual initiative by-
I'm sorry, you're late, you're late. I have never-
Hey.
So we're going to, we're, we're at, we're going to, point of order?
No, I'm done. I said, "What do I need?"
Commissioner Samasco? So we're gonna, we're. We're at, we're gonna point of order. Commissioner Semasko, you, we've heard from Mr. Watkins. You want more discussion from the commissioners?
I, what I was, what I do is, you know, as board chair, I'm one vote. This was a matter that brought my attention that people were asking for a number of things, everything from removal to, to reprimand to whatever else. So I put it on merely so this board can address if anything they wish to do about the conduct or behavior. I felt in, in the most modest terms that a reprimand would be appropriate. That's what I've said. That's how I feel. If there's no motion or second for that, if we can move on. If anyone else wants to have a say about how they feel about it, I just felt to do nothing would be complicit. I mean, I felt we should do something with that. The transcript, I felt, was merely a fair way to nail down what was said and the context in which it was said. That's all that was. But to, for people to complain to me as board chair and ask me to do things as board chair, you need to do this, you need to do that. Well, I act through this commission as a body corporate. And so that's all. So I put it up. I do not have an agenda. I do not have, other than I would vote in support of, of reprimand and to be willing, glad to draft a, some type of a letter of public reprimand and, and handle it that way. Because I felt the comments were in context inappropriate and conduct unbecoming of a appointee of the county giving the appearance that they're speaking on behalf of the county. I wished he would never said those words, could have used other words. It was, I don't know what he meant exactly, but we have from everybody how it was perceived, how it was said, how it was meant. We have all that. But just, I'm hoping that if we did a reprimand, it would caution people, maybe people be a little more sensitive, especially in the, the context where we're in and what's going on with, with the society today, with the way things are said and things that are done and the, the aggressive and dangerous activities that others do after they listen to people perhaps. So that's what I did. I put it out there because now it's in front of the whole board. It's not for me to say this or this, to, you know, you're out or you're in or whatever, reappointed or not. That's another day. But at least we've addressed it publicly. That's transparency. That's accountability. I'm, I would think a reprimand would be an order, but I'm not going to lose the sleep order if we don't. That's just my position. If others feel that way, fine. If nobody feels that way, that's fine. That's all I can tell you. But I'm trying to be fair.
Anyone else?
I have quite a bit.
Commissioner Rushing?
On the, uh, there was two other letters that were written by members on the Health Advisory Board. They are not here tonight and couldn't be here tonight. So I want to add those because all four of them felt threatened. So I'm going to start off with Dr. Stephen Smith's letter. I strongly feel the need to reach out to all of you regarding past and recent conduct with our Advisory Board of Health. I feel you as our Board of Commissioners who give out oversight to the Advisory Board of Health should give immediate attention and resolution regarding misconduct. It is my opinion the Board of Commissioners should proceed and hold accountability to any member that has violated rules, procedure and professional conduct. To keep this letter brief but to the point, I am appalled after reviewing the video and transcript from September 17th, 2025 Advisory Board of Health meeting. My name was mentioned and now this has my attention and my family's attention. I will not be intimidated or bullied by any member in my presence or in my absence. In addition to the above, I am asking to have appropriate monitoring or law enforcement present at all our meetings. I do not want to see an unavoidable situation become another statistic. I truly believe that threatening words cannot be spoken and later dismissed as passionate or that any person should feel they can hide behind the curtain of any other organization to protect them from, from their inappropriate actions. I hope to soon see a positive and bright future in our county and that all of us pull together and represent all that are living in our community. Thank all of you for your hard work and please submit my letter accordingly. There's another short one.
Commissioner Rushing, just so you know, they are both, they'll both be a part of the meeting minutes.
I know, but we have a public meeting and these people come here and I'll use the passionate word that's been used tonight. They want to know how we're making our decisions. And if they're not given this information and wherever we go with this, they need to be given that. They don't have this in front of them. So I want to let them know.
Fair enough. I just wanted to reassure you that they'll be in the minute, the minutes. I know that's important to you.
I hope there is.
And that was the reason, that was the reason, and that was the reason we had that bylaw provision so that they would be attached.
Yes.
So people could see it.
Yes.
This one's much shorter. And this is from Carolyn Richards. I am emailing you regarding the concern I have for the Health Advisory Board member Kevin Watkins calling for the assassination of the four members that were not present at the last meeting, myself included. He called each one of us members out by name. In today's world of unfathomable violence, this statement made by Mr. Kevin Watkins should not be taken lightly, especially following the horrific assassination of Mr. Charlie Kirk. In this volatile political realm, anyone can perceive this statement as a literal call for action. I do have a copy of the legal transcript from Mr. Watkins' statement. And if any of the board members have not seen it, and then it goes to, I do appreciate Commissioner Rushing informing Mr. Watkins that his statement was inappropriate. I also mentioned at that meeting, and there was a issue earlier in this year that one of our residents was threatened in the elevator that was made note of. I believe Kevin gave a sincere representation of himself, so we took no action on that. But that person was felt very threatened in the elevator with them. Uh, now on the one lady that talked here, she quoted two verses of the Bible. And it says, "He who is without sin cast the first stone." Jesus Christ also said right directly after that, so he also holds people accountable. And I won't have the wording exactly correct, but he also said to the lady and went up to her and said, "Sin no more." So he's holding that lady accountable. So same thing here, wherever we go with this, sin no more. Not that we're God or anything like that. The last thing I have that is the deliberations that, this whole transcript, there's documentation in there and I brought it up at the meeting. There was deliberation going on and that's not for our board to decide. That's up for the sheriff, for the state police to see if there was a violation of the Open Meetings Act that he was asking for action to be taken in a meeting that there was no quorum. So on my viewpoint of that, that was another violation of the Open Meetings Act, potentially deliberating out of context. You can have regular conversations at a meeting. You can talk about the weather, but you cannot deliberate. That's my impression of the Open Meetings Act. Now, I will make a motion to either censure or reprimand Kevin Watkins for the statements made in here, whether it was Kevin or anybody else serving on any other board anywhere in this county. They should not be using that type of language. And if it comes to me with any other resident or a board member that does that, I will take the same position. So my motion is to censure or reprimand Kevin Watkins. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? It's, it's point of order. There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Point of order discussion.
Yeah, point of order. So at this time, will the clerk take a voice call, both?
Roll call.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabush?
No.
Commissioner Beaton?
No.
Motion carries.
Uh, so the conclusion of that is that there will be a censure.
Letter of reprimand.
Uh, that will be drafted and sent to the.
I'll submit something to Mr. Fletcher that reflects the conversation. Send it out.
That'd be sent to our full board on the 16th.
I was just going to send it out and, you know. But would you rather have it submitted for a further voter to send out the public letter?
We've already voted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure council approves it and we will send it out and mail it to Mr. Watkins. Thank you.
Uh, no old business. Moving on to item 7A, the library network delivery service contract.
Make a motion to send that to the full board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the MSU extension FY 2026 memorandum of agreement renewal.
Make a motion to send that to the full board.
Thank you.
I'll support. That was a motion, correct?
Yes. So we have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Do you want to have something?
Oh, hi. Took my glasses off. If you have any questions. Any questions? How are you? Good. How are you? Um, I just wanted to point out one thing on here. So, uh, under the staffing and financial summary, item C, D, you'll see that there's a credit for the county-employed 4H program coordinator. So that's Lori Warchuk. Uh, she is a county employee. She's actually the last one in the state who is county-employed. And, uh, whatever possible, we like to switch that over to an MSU employee. Uh, just takes out a lot of hassle. Um, even now she still has issues sometimes accessing some of our reporting systems and other things that she needs to do her job. Uh, purchasing, uh, is a very complicated workaround and mileage reimbursement and things like that. So, um, I've had a conversation with Miss Hefting and, um, it seems like that's, you know, everyone's on the same page with switching that over to, um, a, an MSU employee when she retires in April. That's her plan. So, um, we'll just amend this at that time when that happens. Um, so that will change and, um, that won't be a credit anymore. So.
I have a question.
Commissioner Smith?
So to do that, essentially would then take whatever compensation Lori Warchuk got and then increase your contract so you could then retain her as an employee? That's how that would work?
So Lori is planning to retire April 1st from the county. So she's had 26 years in with the county. Um, so when we hire a new person, the goal would be to hire them as an MSU extension.
I totally understand that. That's, I a hundred percent get that. That's not my question. My question, mechanical part of it is she gets compensation as a county employee from the county.
Right.
You're going to now want to pay her through the university.
Right.
You're not going to just pick that up as a freebie, right? You're going to want us to increase your contract to compensate for the cost of this new employee.
Correct.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Sometimes I'm not real clear. But then the other question is if you have, I would assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, university employees are subject to all university policies.
Yes.
County employees are subject to all county policies.
Correct.
University, uh, employees aren't necessarily subject to county policies. Also correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's, I guess where my concern would be is, you know, Lori, I've known Lori Warchuk. My kids are in 4H. She's just, is an awesome person, brought community values, everything to our county. So who are you hiring to replace her through some university system as opposed to a local county hire? I like a local county hire, especially with our youth, especially with somebody involved in 4H. So even though there's a purchasing issue or some of these other things, we're going to lose that, right? We're not going to have that, that local connection anymore. It's going to be strictly a university decision.
Um, well, we would form the search committee to hire that person.
Regardless of the search committee, it would be a university hiring decision, correct?
Right.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yes. Uh, do you have an approximate cost of what the potential new employee will be? So I imagine if we approve this at our full board meeting in two weeks, that's going to last up until April 1st then? Or for the entire year of 2026?
So up until we amend the MOA, so around April 1st, whenever that would work out.
If the, if the cost is $300,000 for this employee, I'm exaggerating on purpose, that, uh, and we don't agree on that, maybe it's going to be $40,000. I don't know. So without having that facts in front of us, I could not approve the entire fiscal year 2026. Carrie, would that, we, this goes to our full board without approving, approve it for the entire 2026?
So we have had this occur in the past. Um, we had many MSU extension employees who were county employees. And then when we went to the MOU system, as the county employees retire, they became MSU employees. So if you look at, um, the contract, there's a credit on the, on the MOU for the county employee. So that credit would go away and we would no longer pay that from our budget. But the MSU extension budget, their total budget would not increase. So we would not be giving them more money. Instead of the county paying the employee, MSU would be paying the employee. So it would just change the credit.
But the contract, it's got a dollar value on it, correct?
It, it does. So the contract would need to be amended in order for them to hire an employee when Lori retires in April.
Back to my question, if we approve this in our full board meeting on the 16th, this is going to be subject to an amendment in April, whether it continues for the entire year?
It would be subject to an amendment in April if they can hire an employee to replace Lori. But the rest of it would be in effect.
We'll have the figures then and.
It's what would take effect upon her retirement essentially.
Well, th- this contract covers a lot of things besides this one employee. So if they were to transition that to an MSU employee, that's the only thing the amendment would address.
One, one last question. Do you think that the, uh, the university and the memorandum of understanding would consider allowing that hire to be, uh, require our consent for that hire? Or do you think they would, they would find that objectionable?
Um.
I mean, actual consent, not just a, not a committee, but actual, like, board consent or county consent to that individual. Do you think they'd go for that or not likely?
I've not heard that occur anywhere else in the state. Um, you know, we.
Maybe check into that, see if that's something they'd be, they would consider and let me.
Something we have done in other counties is have a 4H, 4H council member or maybe a fair board member , um, join the search committee so we do have that local input.
I'm a kind of a control guy. I like to know that. I like to have the bottom line, you know, but.
Well, you're welcome to join the search committee if you'd like.
No, the search committees are search committees and the, the, the rubber meets the road with the hiring. I don't need a search committee. I'm talking about who's going to, you know, just can we consent to the hiring? Are we going to be, you know, I know you're considerous, but I'm just wondering would they allow the MOA, MOA to indicate that, that we'd have to be, have consent, our consent to make, whoever they chose, we'd have to, we'd have to pass off on it. That's all. I just, maybe the board wouldn't even want to do that, but I'm just, if you could find that out, I'd like to know.
Sure.
Thank you.
I will just add, um, in conversations with Miss Hefting, it would be saving the county money in the end since Lori's been, you know, with the county for 26 years. So it would be a savings to the county in the end.
I just know what she does and how she does it. And I don't know who you're going to get to replace her. But she really had a heart, as you know, was just a tremendous heart for the youth. And you just want to make sure you get somebody in there. And she's local. She's from St. Clair County, lived here. They farmed. They did the whole 4H thing for her whole life. And not just get somebody that, you know, I don't know. I'd just like somebody like her.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm.
If we could keep her around for another 26 years, we would.
So there's some way to get that, you know, into there. That'd be great.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. So we have a motion and support.
We do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Why are you looking at me?
Thank you. I just like to make eye contact. You happen to be making eye contact back. Department, uh, item 7C, the Department of Human Services reappointment?
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other human services matters this evening? Hearing none. No items for information only. I'll take a motion to receive and file packet.
Make that motion, receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a second for motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Support, support by Commissioner Terrell. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Calling the board commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Commissioner Beaton?
Present.
Commissioner Terrell?
Present.
Commissioner Semasko?
Present.
Commissioner Zeller?
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandabush?
Here. Any additions, deletions or changes to the agenda? If not, please give me a motion.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Citizens with petition to be heard. First one I have, Brooklyn.
Good evening. My name is Brooklyn Friendal. Um, I am from Animal Control. I used to be a technician for the last three years. Um, I just left in July, um, due to a list long of issues in the department. Um, a handful of employees left right after me, which they have since then not been replaced. Um, which means there's little to no animal care staffs who care for the amount of animals they have in their facility, which is a big concern as the animals already weren't getting the care they need and deserve. Um, dogs are getting out in the morning for maybe 15 minutes for cleaning and then they're back in their kennels for 22 to 23 day, um, hours a day. Um, no enrichment to keep their minds busy. Um, so mentally they develop kennel neurosis, which resulting in behavioral euthanasia. There was multiple weekends where I worked by myself, caring for the majority of the animals, feeding, medicating, cleaning. animals, feeding, medicating, cleaning, leaving no time for dogs to get out or snuggled without working a bunch of overtime, which I was already putting in 10 to 15 hours of overtime in each week. Going in early to start cleaning, taking all the adoption photos, doing the social media, and finding transfer partners on my own time without pay. I could go on and on about the issues, but I shouldn't have to. At the end of the day, what matters most is the care of the animals, which needs to be better than it is. If the oversight committee could be moved forward, we can come up with solutions to fix these issues and get the animals and staff the support they truly need. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Avery Steimak and I am also a former employee of St. Clair County Animal Control. I was there for about three and a half years before I ended up making the decision to resign. A lot of that was due to some of the issues that were starting to arrive due to the lack of staffing. I would love to go into a brief day in the life of an animal care employee. First, I would arrive 30 minutes early just to start prepping food for roughly 120-plus animals. We would have a short morning meeting, depending on what staff was there, and then 95% of the cleaning would be given to the animal care technicians. By the time throughout our day we finished cleaning, it was the end of the day. So the dogs got and cats essentially would get no care beyond basic needs. We would also be expected to clean all the dogs by ourselves, which is about 30-plus on top of sections of cats, which would result in another 50 to 70 animals we would care for, with whatever animals also came into the shelter that week or that month, depending on what goes on. So with the amount of animals going on right now, there is very little time for enrichment. I struggled a lot with feelings of like I was neglecting them when I should feel like I was more rescuing and giving them off to better chances, which because of the lack of care leads to my next point is that there's barely any staff to help care for these animals. There was at most four animal care technicians my entire time there. When I left, there was only maybe two ACTs, two office staff, a vet tech, and an animal control officer. There was also multiple times where I was left by myself on weekends, which is extremely dangerous, especially when, you know, we work with bike cases and animals can be extremely I would, with the weekends, it's extremely dangerous to have staff there and the staff that work weekends would try four months in advance to get the time off and still there was never an employee able to cover for them, leaving with those technicians by themselves. In the end, there are definitely a lot more issues going on with animal control, but it doesn't compare to the treatment of the animals like I stated above. The care for the animals is the most important thing a shelter can do. With that, I ask for this board to please approve the initiative for animal control. Thank you.
Carol Miller?
Good evening again, board. As many of you know, over the years, I've spoken about the positives and the ongoing concerns with our animal control department. One issue I continue to hear from residents is the inability to reach staff by phone and citizens tell me they can only communicate by email and too often they receive no response. I've had countless people reach out, either by phone, email, text, and even in the grocery stores, being tagged in social media postings as well, sharing their frustrations and asking for help. I always encourage them to work through the proper channels, but many state they feel ignored. That's why I continue to speak up, because our community deserves to be heard. Recently, I was contacted by former staff and volunteers who shared accounts that were truly heartbreaking, stories that actually made me come to crying. The level of turnover we are seeing in staff and volunteers is deeply concerning. It raises a serious question, why hasn't anyone in the managerial role looked into why people keep leaving? It's also discouraging that so few volunteers remain despite so many citizens eager to help. I've personally offered several times to mishapthing to organize volunteers for events like Empty the Shelter, to actually empty the shelter. Yet I was told that I could not help because I speak up. Whether that statement is true or not is deeply troubling. Speaking up for accountability should never be punished, it should be valued. That is why I'm urging you tonight to support Commissioner Torello's conceptual initiative for an animal control oversight committee. This would be a non-budgetary committee costing the county nothing, but providing oversight, transparency, and community partnership. Other Michigan counties have already created similar committees with great success. They've helped strengthen communication, boost volunteer engagement, and ensure both animals and staff are treated with the compassion that they deserve. This is not about criticism, it's about collaboration. It's about building a bridge between the county, its citizens, and the shelter that represents the heart of animal care in St. Clair County. I respectfully ask that you move this initiative forward to the full board for adoption. Together, we can create a system built on transparency, respect, and compassion for the animals, for the staff, and for the people who care so deeply about both. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community.
My name is Courtney Prot Sanders. I'm a board member for Michigan Pet Alliance. We are a statewide nonprofit. We're a membership-based association, so we represent people in communities and they contact us when they're having issues regarding animals in their community. In fact, we worked with you eight to 10 years ago, mishapthing, Commissioner Rushing, and a lot of new faces. So it's nice to be back. We have been contacted again by our St. Clair County members. They are concerned about the proposal regarding an animal welfare commission. They've asked for, I don't know that they've asked you, they've asked the folks organizing it for a draft of the ordinance that would create the commission. They have asked, let's see, what are the requirements, qualifications, compositions, scope, and duties? What is the purpose of the animal welfare commission? As we all know, it can't be to oversee animal cruelty investigations. Those are confidential, ongoing investigations and legal cases. And you already have oversight for animal cruelty. It's your prosecutor's office. St. Clair County is being told that things need to change, staff turnover is high, and on Empty the Shelter's Day, we need to actually empty the shelter. To the last point, they do. They empty the shelter every time that event comes around. Problem is, it fills up just as fast. Regarding employee turnover, the average employee turnover in animal sheltering in every state in the U.S. is two to three years. So St. Clair County's employee turnover in the shelter is right on par with everybody The shelter does need help. All shelters need help. Here are four ways that the community can help the shelter. St. Clair County needs a pet food pantry on the west side near Yale. St. Clair County shut-in seniors, overwhelmed caregivers, need occasional drop-ins for resources. St. Clair County needs a community mental health support group for people who have been charged. The majority of those folks are hoarders. It's a 100% recidivism rate. They receive one-year probation and really no resources after that, but we have seen success in other communities when a CMH support group is created and it's a great job for those in the medical field. And then St. Clair County needs targeted community vaccine clinics. You have eight areas in your county with extraordinarily high panleucopenia rates. It's a fatal disease that affects kittens. A simple, very cheap vaccine can save their lives, but we don't have anyone providing that service. And the St. Clair County shelter would welcome partnership with community members who want to help, who want to start any of these things. We would provide the training and the resources for it. So beyond that, what you guys can do to help the shelter is, they need a shelter manager, they need a volunteer and foster care coordinator, and they need a new building. It is literally falling apart. Your employees have spent $38,000 out of their own pocket to provide the things that the budget cannot.
Need you to ramp it up, please.
Yes, sir. And in terms of what this animal welfare commission would look like, I want you to consider the qualifications and experience of your current director. There's no one who matches them in our state. Thank you.
Susan Atwater?
Hi, my name is Susan Atwater. Nice to see you all again. I am going to leave off where Courtney was talking about. Michigan Pet Alliance has been contacted by a couple of our local animal advocacy groups. Some of us who run nonprofits. We have a huge cat issue in our county. Just by doing spatial distribution, we have close to 100,000 cats running around our community in our county. So what we'd like to start doing is making sure that we are educating our community about these, how they can help, how they can make things better. There is a workshop that will be put together by Michigan Pet Alliance on Monday, November 10th at 10:00 a.m. There are flyers in the back for everybody. There is a cost to this. There are also some scholarships that are still available for individuals who are unable to afford this. If you go to the michiganpet.org website, you will be able to read what is going to be happening. It's going to be about cat behavior and body language, when you know that that cat is going to come at you with all claws or are they going to run the other direction? It's also going to go over how to help create a successful barn cat program. We have a lot of individuals who do organic farming in our county. Cats are perfect. Through my nonprofit, I know that we have set up several cats on barns for organic farmers. They do exactly what they're looking for. If you have any further questions, you can contact Michigan Pet Alliance, going through their website and they will gladly let you know what's going on. There is also continuing education points for this, so animal control officers can also help to get their points that they need for the year. Thank you.
Vicki Blackburn?
I apologize for banging the podium. It's hard for me to know what to say because I speak from my heart and there are people in this room that I love, I admire, that I follow on Facebook. We communicate back and forth, share our hearts and everything. And so I spend my life trying to understand. In terms of safety, since that's what this committee is, I would like a copy of the incident report that was filed from the elevator. And I would like a copy of, and I can foia both of these. I'd like a copy also of whatever document this board has decided to come up with. I also will call on my commissioner, who I greatly respect, and ask that person, please, email me, text me, call me, and share where in that document, that transcript, there was anything that Kevin Sutter did to call out anybody. He didn't call anybody out. It just, and the elevator thing is as old as, the black man and the white woman, it's all through history. Cities have been burned down because of that, false allegations. So I would just ask us, I don't know the answer, if anybody is interested in bipartisan conversations. I wanted to come to the dinner tomorrow, but that's because I live to learn and I really, really, really try to understand how some folks see it through such a different lens. What I can say, Kevin's done more than a few things around the community. He's been a leader, he's been an example, he's been a mentor. He cares for children, he cares for seniors, he cares for whites, he cares for blacks, he cares for people that are Hispanic, he cares for anybody that needs him. And I can say that he's said very favorable things about you, to me. And I've known Kevin for years. Sometimes he gets animated and I say, you know, Kevin, you know, just relax, so to speak. And so I would say, and let him reflect, if you really want to know the man, he's a good man.
Any updates from the commissioners? In turn, slipping, but yes.
Just like I have three more times to speak. I speak on this one, on animal control. I listen to that and I love dogs. My third shepherd in 20 years, hopefully he lives to be there. He lived about 18 years. I used to own standardbred racehorses, another part of my life and we raced a lot. That's how I learned about this beautiful state of Michigan. I was, we traveled all over, every fair. We had the babies, the two and three-year horses, to race at all the fairs before horse racing kind of died in Michigan. But one thing, and I have a shepherd that lives outside, I think people will probably report me because I keep my dog outside. He has a $400 doghouse and eats well and it's a 15 by 30 kennel and freshwater twice a day, but because I don't bring him in and weather, it's 70 degrees inside, I guess it's animal abuse. It's all what you think, you know, you know. I would never buy dog food that I put in the refrigerator. My dog's not getting that. It'd cost a fortune. He's a big shepherd, 85 pounds and still growing. But I just wish that people would think about taking care of people like they take care of dogs. Some people take care of dogs or animals more than they do the people. If I had a choice, that a baby was starving and a dog was starving or a horse was starving and only can feed one, I'd doubt on feeding the baby, a human being, still care for and try to find something for the dog and for the horse. People come first. And not with everyone, though, and it's kind of like, it's just a weird thing and people that really love their animals and treat them like they're babies, they are part of the family, don't see that. But shame on anyone who would call the animal control on a person because they don't think like you and buy food from the refrigerator or keep their dog outside because of the cold out. Shepherds love, they won't do well. My shepherd in the house, he likes to be outside. That's why his coat is thick and it grows and he has shelter. But no, my wife says he's not coming in the house. So, you know, but I know there's some people here that will report me to the animal control because my dog is outside and it's cold out. You know, it's a matter of perspective and I'm gonna come up with a next committee meeting and talk about the First Amendment. I thank you, I tell people, you know, I love the committee meetings because we have five times to speak. When the tap you want to speak on, there's nothing in the bylaws that we have to speak on that committee information. So, you know, exercise your First Amendment right. We need to speak, they need to hear from us. And if you're here for me, I'm sure the commissioner's gonna start scrambling and trying to change the rules because they did change from four minutes to three minutes. But right now, we can speak at every committee meeting and so you're here for me, I think, two or three more times.
All right, moving on. Any updates from commissioners?
I have an update.
Sure.
I'm proud to say that I attended the open house at the new juvenile intervention unit just the other day. St. Clair County, you may know, went for a number of years without any housing whatsoever for juvenile offenders. And in fact, we had to pay other counties, including and especially Macomb County, to house juveniles that required detention. But now, thanks to Tom Hall and Danielle Eastwood, we once again have our own much-needed facility. These two, working together with other staff, have done an amazing job putting the licensing together with other difficult hurdles that they surpassed. The juvenile intervention unit will start with a soft opening on October 6th before building up to using 20 beds total. I can also proudly report that there were leadership, members from leadership of other counties who attended the open house because they were quite interested in our facility. And it appeared to me that they looked like they might want to be contributing possibly financial resources so that they could avail themselves of some of these beds as well. So it's a much-needed facility and thanks to Tom and Danielle, it's gonna be up and running soon and growing. So I'd like to thank Tom and Danielle and everyone that worked on it.
Just a question, are we gonna have a high school there?
There is, there is a school, yes, there's a plan for-
And I know it was like a 99% graduation, right? Because they had a, well, they couldn't leave. So the high school at the, was doing fantastic, so it was getting a lot of GEDs for kids that needed it, so.
Yes.
Asking if they're gonna reinstate that also?
Yes, they are gonna be providing education there as well, yes.
Does that involve any opioid settlement money or how does that fund it? Is that just a-
I don't believe that has anything to do with opioid settlement funds, no.
Any more questions for? Any more questions for? All right, moving on to, anyone else have any updates? Moving on, conceptual initiative, Animal Control Advisory Board.
Well, I guess this is probably where I should jump in. And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't send a copy of that off to you. I kind of drafted possibly what a committee would look like or could look like if this is the route that the board wanted to go. It's just to address a lot of the issues brought forward for us to just kind of take a look at, to see if this is something that we wanted to do, just to put a little bit more oversight over there to maybe see if some of these things could be addressed so that maybe the issues would lessen. So, and I know they were emailed out, and I apologize, I didn't send one to you, but I can do that. So I don't know if you guys all read through that or not, or if you have a different thought.
I read through it, and thank you for sending that out, Joy. I just want to point out some of the things that concern me. It does sound like our animal shelter and staffing does need some attention. But as far as forming a committee, I just want to voice the following concerns that I have, particularly as it relates to oversight. If we're going to have a citizen committee with oversight powers, I wonder about, are they going to, is the vision to make them an enforcement arm? Because I don't know that that's appropriate or safe. And so I would be concerned about that. I'd also be concerned about their belief or ability to visit possible, possible crime scenes if someone calls in and complains that there's an animal being abused. If the police are investigating an area where there might be evidence, and the citizen committee comes charging into the evidence field, I don't know that the police would take too kindly to that. I don't know that that would be conducive to appropriate investigation either. So I would be concerned about that and a number of other things as well. So while I like the idea of discussing a possible committee, possibly to fill in some of the blanks that some of the people here have spoken about, particularly the animals being, not being able to have attention to go outside, or be snuggled and things that they need like that. I think that, that's a huge need, that a citizen could, committee could, could fill. And I love that idea, and I hope that we can look toward, toward that general area. But as far as enforcement or oversight, that I, would be a huge concern for me.
Well, I guess this is where we can talk about it, sure.
Dave?
Hi, Dave.
I have your same concerns. I think we draft, if we go forward with this, because there is concerns that we've talked about, to find out if, in the actuality, because we all get phone calls, and some of the phone calls, there isn't some truth to it, but it's their version of it, and that was brought up early. And that was like the German philosopher Gestalt. We can all look at something, and you think we're looking at the same thing, but your mind puts it in good form for yourself. And I think we could come up with an advisory board that would be very minimal, make sure that there's guidelines, you're not going to go on a crime scene. And just advise that, and it could be a three-month window, six-month window, to see if it's even and necessary. So we can put an initial timeframe if we go forward with this, just gather some information, and at least then we can talk better as county commissioners when our residents call us in regards to animal concerns. We really have no answers. With an advisory board, at least they could give us some answers to where we could speak, you know, happily decent about it. But I definitely wouldn't want crime scene stuff like that going forward.
Anyone else? Steve?
I was on the board back in 2010 when we revised our animal control ordinance. I was in the prosecutor's office many years. I've got a farm. Do a lot with animals. And animal control, you know, there's, what came up in 2010 was, again, and this is common with the way society works, we had people, say, animal rights, animal welfare people, we had sportsmen, we had breeders, we had kennel operators, we had all these competing interests that were pushing for different levels of animal welfare as an organization as such, as opposed to, let's say, an advisory committee for the local practices and values of our local community in animal control. And we've got MDAID, I mean, and it kind of raised its head, it was just a couple of years ago, they tried to bring something from Macomb County that was quite expansive on, say, animal, animal rights, and it didn't really fit with animal husbandry or MDAID and the GAMS, the generally accepted animal management practices. And we've got to put all that together, because my fear, there's people that are passionate about many things, and they, they, they drive towards many things passionately, and animal rights is one of them. And, but then you've got the breeders and the kennel operators, and the farmers and others, and, you know, veterinarians. So I think it's, it's a good idea to have people involved in the community to bring principles and values to how we operate our animal control, say, oversight on, on how we enforce, how we, how we treat citizens, how we, what we expect from people, and then how they care for animals in a rural setting versus a, maybe a quasi-residential setting and all that. So I would be more than happy to consider it, but I'd want to have a very clear mission and purpose. I don't want to create an animal welfare organization. I looked at the flyer here, and Google, I look at stuff when I'm on the board, michiganpet.org takes you to, it takes you to a different website for another thing. You know, so I don't want to get into some big state oversight, organized, champion something or other. I'd just like to run our animal control in a way that reflects how our citizens want our citizens treated, and how they want the animals treated. What level of care do we require? And back in 2010, they were trying to bring in many, many things that would have shut down a lot of longtime kennel operators. So we, I was on the board then, we grandfathered in old kennel operators, the sportsmen's people had, they had things that affected how they would use hunting animals and things like that, and how they transported animals, and how they housed animals and all this. So I don't want to micromanage that under the law. I did a memorandum a while back, I think a couple of years ago, on where the, the dog law of 1929 provides for animal control. It provides for enforcement, it provides for a level of reference, basically, you know, the dogs and so forth. Well, the statute, the penal code statute for, for lack of care is different. That, that's all animals. If you don't provide lack of care for any animal, you fall under that statute. And so how do we, how do we apply that? One person's idea on how we apply it is maybe totally different than some other person, and the director may have a certain vision or passion for a certain level of enforcement, but maybe that doesn't reflect what the community expects. So what we expect as a board, as representatives of the community. So I would like to look at that, to have a voice from the public, because I don't want to micromanage that. But if we had enough people, a veterinarian, a farmer, a kennel owner, whatever, an animal rights person, all these people, if they wanted to do that on a bouncer basis or small perdiem, just like we do with health advisory boards, other boards and commissions, I'd certainly consider that. But I don't want to just, you know, run off and say we're going to have a commission or advisory, advisory board without knowing exactly what their mission is, who's going to be on it, and how that's going to perform the duties, you know. So I think it's a good idea. There's a lot of people that want to have involvement with animal control that sound like they're shut out because it's not what the director wants over there, and maybe doesn't want to deal with it, or maybe doesn't have to deal with it, you know. But we can look at that, and I think as representatives of the community, we could look at that to say, well, we're going to have an advisory committee to help blend in the county values and principles that the citizens want in our enforcement. I guess that's, so I guess I agree with the conceptual initiative, but I think it needs a lot more work. This lady was talking about around the state, different things, a different, I'd like to see, that's what I do, is I rip off other areas. I look to other counties, say, what are they doing? How's this working? Are they like us? Are they different? Is it good, is it bad? You know, and then basically steal the good ideas and don't take the bad ideas. So I'll look at it. I don't think it's ready to just say, let's do it. But if you want to, as board chair, I can support, I can point a special committee with a purpose and say, okay, there's a committee of certain commissioners are going to do this and come up with a idea. We can do something like that, we can have a workshop, we can just bring it back up as a more refined, because I don't remember, you sent that out a month and a half ago?
Yeah, it's been-
Yeah.
But I think we've had other things-
I looked at it, and it was, I kind of get it, but it needed a lot more refinement, so that's, that's where I'm at on it. So I don't think it's ready to go to full board to say, implement that program, but I think it's something that's worthy of consideration and some, some good thought in the matter, so that's where I'm at.
Just a humor story, I was at that meeting, and that's before we had the time clocks and everybody got their time to speak. They had this nine or 10-year-old girl up there, and she was just very passionate. And at the meeting, it was, I ain't cutting her off, and she got run over, but a very passionate young girl about animals, and nobody was going to cut her off, but we didn't have the clocks for anybody to watch it.
Amy?
I'd like to just add that I think having a committee is an interesting concept. I don't know that I would support oversight for it, because I do think that there's some special, special, I know that there's a lot of licensing and laws and specialties that I don't know that just everyone has, but I totally encourage citizen participation in some of the things that were listed here tonight about pet food pantries and drop-ins for seniors and support groups, getting CMH involved with support groups and vaccine clinics. Those are all things I think could start happening now if there was a group of passionate citizens that wanted to start leading that. So I wouldn't, I would encourage the citizens to just take charge and start now, and don't let government slow down your enthusiasm. You know, if, if there's people in Yale that are passionate and want to start, or K-PAC in the western side of the county that are, that see this need, man, fill it. Don't, don't wait for us. We take too long, so. But I would-
And we're broke.
Well, and so I, so I, I don't, I would consider it, but not in the, the format that it's in today. So that's where I'm at.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to, there's no old business, moving on to new business. Michigan Public Safety Communications Systems Member Subscriber Agreement.
Make a motion, send to full board.
Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carried. Resolution 2526 authorizing the District Court Building Fund.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
Second.
Any questions on that?
Question, we used to have, in Marine City years ago, we used to call it the Carpet Fund. It was, old man McCarthy did that. I don't know if they had board approval or not, but it was to raise money for repairs to the courthouse. Is that what this is? Is that what is the courthouse fund?
That, that's what this fund is for.
Okay. Any parameters on that, what the cost might be? Or is it a hundred dollars per thing, or is it going to be a three dollar? Any idea of what they're, what they're trying to raise, or, and I apologize, I didn't look at the-
Wait, District Court Administrator, right here.
Good afternoon, good evening, I'm sorry. This is for a renewal of the District Court Building Fund. We currently collect $5 from every misdemeanor felony that's reduced to a misdemeanor traffic ticket. So this is a renewal-
It's been there for a long time, then. It's been, it goes way back.
Since 1998.
Yeah, it goes way back, okay. I didn't know if it's a new thing, or, we used to call it the Carpet Fund, but it was, it was kind of a joke. They needed the threadbare carpets, so they added this fee to pay for some of the repairs, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. 2526 Child Care Fund Budget Approval.
Motion, send to full board.
Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Approval of contract for Peterson Consultants Data Quality Research for Juvenile Court.
Make a motion, send it to full board.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carried. Prove purchase for RFID scanners for the juvenile intervention unit.
Move to send to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. And the 2025 Marine Safety Grant Program Amendment.
Make a motion to send that to full board. Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Any other judiciary public safety matters? Hearing none? Receiving file packets?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carried.
At this time, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Zeller? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembach?
Here.
Commissioner Torello?
Present. Are there any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, citizens wishing to be heard. I have none. Mr. Watkins.
Thank God for America, thank God for the First Amendment, which seems like our commissioners are trying to take away. They tried with Jimmy Kimmel, didn't work. It's not going to work, especially with people that call themselves, that are champions of the First Amendment and the Second Amendment. I believe firmly in both, and refuse to let anyone either be taken away. We just talked about the First Amendment, is that based on what the commission decided to do with the majority vote of sanctioning a board member of one of your county boards to speak? But I need to make something really clear, and I'm glad Mr. Fletcher's here, because what Ms. Carolyn Richards put in the record is a problem. She basically accused me of calling for the assassination of my fellow health board members, four of my fellow health board members. And of that, it's part of the record, but I think it's part of the whole process with coming up with this meeting in regards to the complaint. I wonder why I'm not arrested? And maybe you need to call for my arrest, the sheriffs in the back had me arrested now, because if I ain't called for the assassination of people, that's serious. That person needs to be in jail, because those words are strong, and shame on you if that occurs. And they say, well, you knew that, why do you do anything about it? We see it all the time. People concerned about that, that if you don't act, the first thing they say that, you knew, you saw it coming, you have examples, the person stated what they were going to do, and you did nothing. So why am I not arrested? Why is that sheriff in the back room coming to take me to jail if I called for the assassination of four of my fellow health board members? That's exactly what her, her statement stated, that was happily put in the record by Mr. Rushing. And I have two more times to speak, maybe three, but I'm just going to make sure this lasts 45 seconds. I wonder, so I, so I can't look at people? Black, this, this is the incrimination of black men. I can't, if I look at Commissioner Angie too long, then is she going to get intimidated? If I look at Mr. Rushing too long, is he intimidated? Mr. Rushing stated, I don't know if it's unrecognizable that he has guns in every room of his, of his home, but he scared me? Mr. Rushing, I would never tell my wife I was scared of another man, never. I, I know you didn't mean that. I know you didn't mean that, that you were afraid of me, really. Any of your commissioners, male commissioners up there, Mr. Samasco, are you afraid of me? Mr. Vandembach, I know you're not afraid of me, so I know you, I know you're not afraid of me. And why would the ladies be afraid of me? I'd be up for the next couple of times to finish my statement here. Yeah, I'd finish my, I could, I'd be up, finish my statement.
I have no other citizens wishing to be heard. Is there any updates? None, moving on. No conceptual initiatives? Thank you. No old business, moving to new business. Item A, landfill, 2526, materials contract with Danny's Transport.
Make a motion, send to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, item B, Materials Management Planning Committee Appointment.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
I need to know who we're appointing.
Okay.
So on the Material Management Planning Committee, it has to be a county official. A county elected official. It was Mr. Phelis.
I don't know why it's on here then with no name. It doesn't list it, so I don't know if you're asking us to appoint somebody.
The board needs to decide who to appoint as a county elected official.
We can still send it to the full board. I'll second the motion. We can still send it. Potentially we'll have that. One of us that wants to fill that position, and then the chair has the obligation of filling that position.
Not on this board.
I'm sorry.
This board has to, this, the Materials Management Planning is not a board chair appointment. It is a commissioner appointment.
I know, I did call on that just to, and it was um,
So any elected official, state township city?
No. Any county elected official.
County elected official, any office, drain commissioner, judge, prosecutor, any of the treasurer.
Yeah, anybody who's elected and.
Do we need their consent?
Just wanna pick one of us?
Do we need their consent or can we just appoint them?
That's up to you.
I would uh, maybe Carrie could solicit some people with knowledge in the area and.
It would, it has to be a county elected official. I, I don't see um, you know, our treasurer.
So like somebody like Joy.
Yeah, no, actually, I did call for it. I did call because I was gonna do it. But it, it's on Tuesdays, and so I have a conflicting schedule with Tuesdays or.
Well, Mr. Zeller will be here at our next meeting. I think the conversation with him, see, he'd sit on it and if uh, suits him, it'd be fine. If not, then we can always change that.
Kind of my idea with some of the appointments, that Mr. Zeller would step into the shoes, but this would evidently require a new appointment.
Yes.
So let's talk to Paul, maybe about that. I'll talk to him. We can talk to him, see if he would like to get his feet wet on that, and he'd be a great candidate for it.
We usually call that Shanghai when they're not at the meeting and you appoint them. Let's just appoint them. I'll make a motion to appoint.
I have the motion, so I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
To appoint Paul Zeller.
This is cruel.
Through the material management.
I'll second that.
We're just sending it to full board.
Ah.
It's not official.
It's okay.
Oh, I'm good with it either way. We can make it for final action as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's not my motion. All right.
So it's a motion to send it full board right now.
Yeah.
I like it.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Make the next meeting.
All right.
Do we have to vote on that now?
So, yeah, well, we're just having discussions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a plan.
That's what you get.
No, but it is, it is an important board and Phelis was, that was kind of what he was interested in, so we'll see if.
Will you have a conversation with him?
Paul's an engineer too, so.
Yeah.
Item C, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority BOD Reappointment.
That's district sub, and I'll make a motion to send it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, landfill twenty-five, twenty-six materials contract with Ashwalt Trucks.
Make a motion, send it full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries landfill twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six materials contract for MTM Incorporated.
I'll make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, landfill twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six material contract for S.A. Torello.
Make motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Joy, I think you should be noted as an abstention.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that would be for the next one when you were warning. Okay, well, I don't wanna have that appearance that I'm doing something shady, so I abstain.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie.
Item G, landfill rate adjustment.
Make motion, send it full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we got a little bit of, could.
Yes, please.
I would like, and I appreciate all your work, Carrie, because I like to be, I don't know if you've got information in regards to twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, with the rates of what's going in the landfill. I don't wanna address this like we had to ten or fifteen years ago and have to address this again in six months. If we're perceiving a drop in what's gonna be at the landfill, I'd rather get this corrected one time, and if it needs to have a slight increase, what you've already recommended, I'd rather get that taken care of. So maybe we can get information if you don't already have it from Matt for the next three years.
Well, I, that's kinda hard to predict. Um, you know what, we, we know what we know today, but we don't know what special projects may be happening next year, the following year. So we know that there has been none this year, which is why our volume is significantly down. We're predicting our revenue's gonna be down probably one point two, one point five million dollars this year over last year. That combined with our increased expenses, um, with the new ops, how we're handling operations and with the bid out of that contract, and then with our new obligations under the consent agreement, we're trending between a, a two, three million dollar deficit in the landfill.
But the figures you gave us will, it's forecasted for a break even.
Yes, that would forecast, it would generate approximately two point one based on our current low volumes. Certainly if we get some special projects in, or if our volumes are up more to some of our historical levels, then it would raise more. But it's, it's very difficult to predict what our volumes would be going forward.
We could have Matt Williams here next meeting, because I can support this the way.
Matt is here?
We are. I didn't even see it.
But I, I wanna ask something as well. When, when would we think that these things, these fees would take effect?
That would be for you to decide.
So what happens with the people like MTRO, Waste Management, all of those who already have contracts with municipalities and?
When you have done rate increases in the past, um, there's typically been quite a long lead time of either three to six months for those municipal contracts in order for those to have time to put those into effect. I think the last rate increase that was done back in twenty-twenty, you may have approved it in November, and it went into effect the following July one, maybe?
Joy, you probably know this. Charter townships, their fiscal year begins on January first. General law townships, they have to do it at the end of March or April first. So this is the perfect time to get this approved, where they can adjust their contracts and have that information. Like in Riley Township, they do it with Jeff's Rubbish. They'll be able to have that figure for Jeff's Rubbish prior to uh, their next fiscal year that they have to approve.
Any other?
I just, Matt, would you have any insight in what's gonna happen the next three years? Because remember, we did this once before and then six months later, we had to do it again.
Did you bring your crystal ball, Matt? That's what I wanna know.
Yeah, I, I recommended twelve dollars.
Some of those fees are pretty, pretty significant.
Back to the Tonight Show with Johnny Carson. No, I don't, no. What I can tell you is that I was contacted a couple of years ago by DTE when they tore the coal plant about how massive that demolition project was gonna be, what to expect. We were planning, we were looking at about three years of fifty percent increase in volume just due to various construction demolition debris. When is that project gonna happen? Is it gonna be to the scope it was? I have no idea. I know that they put a hold on it, it's money. I'm not sure what it is. On the other hand, um, about a month ago, we got notified by Great Lakes Water Authority that they had about thirty-six thousand tons of um, pond cleanup that they wanted to get approved to bring in as special waste. We're just finishing the review on that and improving that to come in. Um, at the rates we're probably gonna start out at, I believe we're gonna call it a contaminated soil, so we're looking at an extra maybe four to five hundred thousand dollars from that project alone. So just to illustrate, they can come, they can go. Really no good way to tell, to be quite honest. But what I can also tell you though, this year is abnormal with respect to the amount of construction and demolition and special weight projects we typically have. And I'm not really sure why, but our MSWs also a little depressed this year from norms we've had over the last.
Sorry, I know you work with Carrie on it, so I can be comfortable with this.
I had a question for Matt. The second time I've heard now from this gentleman talk today about just pulling loads off at the top of the hill. I mean, it, it, I could imagine these are people that don't have dump trailers, so you have to, either they're gonna pitch it off by hand or they want you to remove it from their trailer. Is that the deal?
Yeah, that, that's, that's correct.
So if they come in with a dump trailer, there's no charge, or if they come in and they want you to unload their trailer, we charge for that?
That's correct. We, the flat tipping fee is for the volume of garbage.
So the complaint, the complaint is they pay at the gate on the ton like everybody else. The people that have a dump trailer or a compactor truck that just barfs it out into the landfill, but other people show up and then they want you to unload their trailer, and they don't wanna be charged for that.
That's correct. And, and the option is also to hand unload it upon the.
Right, or, or.
However, sometimes that turns into a two and a half, three hour, four hour operation.
No, you can't, no, no, you can't have some, you can't have some guy unloading ten yards of junk off his trailer taking three hours. Maybe we should clarify it to, when they come in, when they pay their fee, they don't wanna pay the fee at the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill. Okay, at the bottom, I checked the box, are you gonna unload it or unless to unload it? Because the fee is for self-unloading X, and the fee is for we unload Y. That might clear, they won't feel so.
And just to clarify, um, historically, that's been a transaction that's been exclusively between our contractor, Talaski, and the folks on the hill.
They're making some juice on the.
Now that, now that has changed, and we are handling that transaction at the scale of this.
But, so what they were doing is essentially the guys with the whatever machine would say, hey, for a few bucks, I'll unload for you, and that was like money in their pocket. That wasn't.
Well, no, it's, it's a posted rate, and it's the same rate for everybody.
You sound like you're saying the people unloading at the top of the hill were Talaski employees that we weren't getting that money. It was going to the Talaski employees, or was that coming?
For the additional effort, that's.
Right, the Talaski employee, the guy driving the excavator for ten, fifteen bucks for a case of beer would drag the stuff off your trailer.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, it, it didn't work that way. There were slips.
Okay, okay.
You know, we, we helped without, with the waiver requirements on that in the scale house, they would invoice for those loads.
Okay, I couldn't tell it wasn't formal.
There was no Venmo where cases of.
But maybe, maybe you can, maybe we should formalize that and just, you know, so when people.
Which is what we've, which is what we've done essentially.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I guess the last thing I'd have to say is I know we're a closed county, so if we're gonna um, look at, it, it's a pretty significant fee increase, I think, that's gonna fall upon all the taxpayers. I think that we should probably think about making it an open county so that other people, even at the south end of town, may be able to go to waste management. Sorry, Matt. Take my business, but. Good for the, for contractors, people. Maybe we think about making it an open county.
That'd be tough to do. We'd have to get up, and Matt knows that, we'd have to get an agreement with whatever other county, and then they would be able to come to our county also. Is that correct? You open up our county, then, if we were allowed to take stuff to Macomb, trash out of St. Clair County goes there, then Macomb could bring it to us.
If, if it was structured in that way, yes, that's correct.
So we'd have to get an agreement with other counties also.
Under our current sol, also solid waste management plan, the door is closed both ways, and that's by the, what's written in the plan. With the advent of materials management planning, that option has gone away. So if we are going to maintain ourselves as a closed county, closed county moving forward, it's my understanding that we would have to have a different trigger in place to ensure closed county status. Now, that could be, we would welcome outside coming in. We could be completely open, it could be one way. We could, you know, I, that's, that's a topic for discussion here in the coming months.
Okay, thank you. Do we have two motions on that?
We have a motion and a second, yes.
Thank you. Well, I think we covered some discussion. Is there anything else for Matt? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt.
And if I can just add one more comment, I think we need more lawyers and less engineers on the material management.
That happened.
We're gonna work on that. No Smith Creek Landfill Activities Reports. Any other?
I make a motion, receiving files, Smith Creek Landfill Activities Reports.
There aren't any.
Well, let's not go to other environmental public works matters. No other matters, so, let's see. Information, monthly parks and recs financial documents.
Make a motion.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Receiving file packets?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn. Bless.
God bless you.
This time, I'd like to call the Community and Economic Development Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Torello?
Present.
Commissioner Samasco?
A present.
Commissioner Zeller? Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to accept it as presented.
Support.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we have citizens wishing to be heard. I will start with you, Kevin.
Cavilockers Wells Township. Mr. Rush is my commissioner. Feels good to exercise my constitutional right, First Amendment. I still waiting to be arrested. Yes, I guess, I'm confused by that, Mr. Gay Fletcher. I think you should advise your commissioners on this. I got a whole packet full of emails, and again, the E and email stands for evidence of the collusion against me. But I wanna take a moment of this three minutes to, to raise a yellow flag near a red flag to those up there. I'm sure Ms. Heffington heard and Ms. Beeden and Ms. Angie heard the vicious quiet attacks on them. Maybe they wanna recall them or have them sanctioned for what they say they're doing. And all the commissioners are doing were responding to citizens. And maybe talking to monks, fellow commissioners, which with the Open Meetings Act, say you can't do in threes, you can't caucus. How, how soon you get things done? But you got people out here that um, on the attack, they, they believe in the First Amendment, but wanna tronsons another person's First Amendment. They believe in the Second Amendment and even have people coming here carrying sidearms. But if another person mentioned the Second Amendment, now they're dangerous and they're a threat to society. It's cherry picking, it's hypocrisy. And please be careful getting sucked up into that. What was done to me here as a advisory board member is shameful, very disappointing. And people can use um, metaphors or whatever, but you know, that was no different than a public lynching, so how do you feel being a part of a public lynching? A black man, only African-American in the county on one of your boards, and they're setting the stage to make sure that that doesn't happen, you want none. A majority of the board said that they don't want any. Because the, because the acquisition gives me a totally false and, and dangerously a problem. I know, I know um, our county prosecutor, and he's no dumb man. He uh, really very uniquely has given him run his whole career and never have to, have to really work in an election, unopposed. He actually told him that he's gonna actually retire being unopposed because people just run against him. But he, he knows what he's doing, and I, I would like to see him bringing charges against me for stating that I'm gonna assassinate people. And I will finish this my, um, one of the next two committee meetings.
Hey, Dave?
Kevin? I, I wanna say something to you.
To me?
To you. Go right back up there, please. So.
Yes, sir.
When this whole thing came out, there were complaints Steve received, concerns about this word assassination. And he called me, and I work with you on projects, I respect you, and I said, correct me if I, I said Kevin wouldn't say that. I mean, not in the times we're in, when there were two attempts. I mean, not in the times we're in, when there were two attempts to assassinate a presidential candidate. The governor of Pennsylvania had his house blown up. Two, four people got shot in Minnesota, one, two legislators, she, one died, her husband survived, or no, her husband died. And the other two survived. And then Charlie Kirk gets assassinated. I mean, he, because of what he was saying and what he was doing. And I did, I just didn't believe you would use those words in these times. And there are other times in our country when there are other hot button words you just don't use. And that, I really in my heart think that's what this is all about. People heard words that, in the times we're in, are frightening. And so I'm, I'm just telling you that, and when Steve brought it to me, there was nothing about you as a person, there was nothing about your color, and there was nothing about your ideology. It was just a word, assassination, that in these times we're in, both Steve felt and I agreed, were just extremely bad choice of words. But we also agreed, as Charlie Kirk said, he, he talked about the First Amendment rights consistently. And he said there's no hate speech in this country, there's no, all the other words he used. And what he said was, is that, he said, but what we have is the First Amendment, and God bless America, that's what he said. And so as much as we all respect the First Amendment, you called that into question. That's not the issue, the issue that we discussed, in fact, I said to Steve, I said, it's gotta be wrong. He wouldn't, he just wouldn't do that. Because Kevin would know the reaction it would instill in people. So I listened to it, and I, I have bad hearing too, from four years working in a paper mill. And, and the, and the speaker on my computer at the office is bad, so I went home, and I did it with headphones, and I said, he did, that's what he said. And so that's the point of this, honestly, you know me, and it has nothing to do with you as a person, your color, or your ideology, it has to do with a hot button word right now in our country that, that, that's what I believe is what has troubled everybody so much.
Mr. Fletcher, you know I have a ton of respect for you, you know that. I remember when we had the issue with, at that time, with Dr. Gilmer, and people were getting ready to attack me, and I refused to leave the podium. And I spoke with you, I had a respect from you, I left the podium to deal with it another day. But speaking on that, what you just stated, Mr. Fletcher, we gotta be careful with that. Because the First Amendment is the First Amendment. It's just like burning the flag. For that, would burn my heart to see that done, but people have the right to do it. We can't have a president to come into office now and say, you can do this, can't do that. Then it comes to where, ideology where certain people think certain things, this is what you can do under, under the First Amendment. I agree with, of course, any black person would agree to this, that the hate speech, that Jews won't replace us, and using a word and doing things, kill all black people, et cetera. No, that it's all a lie. But with using a word that we, we, we look at etymology, the root of that word, and part of that is character assassination, and it's a sprain, and people look it up and basically- that beyond a reasonable doubt, and then you have evidence that's preponderous of the evidence. And the preponderance of the evidence is what's been happening to me, is it attacking me, and it does have to do with some racism, sir, it does. You may not see that, but it does, and a whole lot of other people can come in and tell you that. They're attacking me, the only black man that has a position on any board in this county. And they're trying to make sure that I don't come back, and they will not put another one on there, or they find Herschel Walker, someone's gonna do what they want, has black skin, but the ideology is not there to speak for people to look like him or her. So, you know, so it, that's my opinion on that. It, that's racism what's happening right now, to me, and a lot of other people.
Hey, Dave? Dave, just, I wanna add to, I just wanna add for Gary here, and it was on a Saturday, it was over the weekend, I think Gary did some kind of event with his family. And it came to me, and I did call him and say, what do you make of this? And that's why I ordered the transcript, and I knew Chris Rummanet had done that kind of work, so over the weekend she knocked it out. I felt in fairness that we'd have the transcript, and we could handle it, you know, in some deliberative fashion here. But I'll, I'll tell you that, that Gary did say he's, he's had nothing but the best of things to say about some of the efforts that Kevin Watkins has had in the community over years. Diffuse situation, has done a lot of good work, been very helpful in all kinds of matters, you know. So it's not personal, it's, it's not, you know, it isn't because of anyone's color, it's because of the context, and because of the, the wording and how it was perceived as well. Just, we're hoping it's, would make you a little more sensitive, maybe you don't have to. But on the free speech, when you speak from a dais, you give the impression you're speaking on behalf of the county. And if it scares people, good or bad, overstated or whatever, that's all, just, that's what it was about. It was nothing personal, that's what I hope we get out of it, I hope we can move on and, and get to a better place, so that's, that's it.
Okay. Bobby Jones?
Good evening again, Bobby Jones. I wanna thank the board for entertaining this very long discussion. I can tell from the body language and everything that it is taking its toll. But hopefully, real quickly, I wanted to share this, when Kevin came up to comment the very first time, I wasn't sure where Gary was going when he started talking about, or when he started talking. When he mentioned the, the water and everything, I smiled. I have enjoyed a very long career in IT, computer programming, and cybersecurity. Currently teach in the area for cybersecurity. And in my years, I've come across a number of things. The water at the rest stops is true. The sensors were never used for black skin. Face recognition, when it was first programmed and coded, it was white individuals who tested and, and had the benchmark. So when a black individual did it, it didn't work. A black individual found that out, a programmer, and brought it to the attention of the company, and this was several years ago. They did nothing about it. It wasn't until almost ten years later that they addressed the issue to make face recognition work for everyone. So when he was talking, I, I, I understood he was trying to express his passion. And I'm not speaking for Mr. Watkins, but when he came up to speak, that was a good point. But he should have went a, a little deeper into the fact that my passion, say his passion, my filter, my life experiences, my use of that terminology comes from my years of experience. Now, I, I, I don't know anyone in the audience who took that the way they took it, but it is my experience that it, it is from your filter. And I know the world right now is in a hot mess. And it may have been a very wrong choice of words in a politically correct environment. But the, the reaction to it and the extent that it has given to me seems a little over the top. So I'm tired, I have to go home and grade paper still before going to bed and getting up. So I, I just wanna thank the, the committee for hearing all of us. Those who spoke against Mr. Watkins, I'm, I, you are just in your, your thought, because that's your perception. But it is true, uh, uh, black people, they have a little different filter.
Bobby, I need to cut you off, but I'd love to talk to you sometime, so if you give me a call, I'd give you all the time you want.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right, we have no other citizens wishing to be heard. Now, because there's really nothing on the agenda, there's no updates, no conceptual initiatives, no old business, no new business, no community economic development matters at this time, no information, so I, no objections, I just need number 10 to receive and file motion.
So moved.
Support.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Most to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.
Calling to order the Ways and Means Committee, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beaton?
Present.
Commissioner Trowlow?
Present.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Zeller? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Moving on to number two, any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I make a motion to accept it as presented.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no citizens to be heard. Mr. Watkins? Thank you, sir.
Well, commissioners, thank you. Kevin Watkins, Wells Township resident. I just feel like exercising my First Amendment right today, and so I'm speaking on every committee. And I'm gonna watch very carefully to see if we try to change the rules of how people can speak, that would be silencing the public. But we, we'll see. Still, this is very sad of your actions today. Basically, what you're doing is, in, in this picture moving forward, is, is trying to silence, you know, a large part of the community that doesn't agree with what the majority of the board, because you're, you know, was a four-three split down, we don't know what it's gonna be, swing votes or whatever. There's a reason why Mr. Felix left. He made his statement, disappointed, because he unseated an icon. People, people respect, I don't know how he could look himself in the mirror to do that, people supported him, probably donated to his campaign, and then he just quit. You know, just so disappointing, but, but I understand he had a reason why he had a problem with his fellow commissioners. Like I have a problem with my, some of my fellow help workers, we just, we just, when I say have a problem, we just have differences of opinion, but that's good, we have spirited, spirited conversation. But what's sad is me, commissioners, is that a black man can't even speak. If I look at you, he's looking at me, and you're gonna call the police. If I speak to you, you're scared, you're calling the police. If I walk in the elevator with, I was trying to go up or down, and you frightened, and then excuse me of intimidating you, really, because I looked at you. Come on, guys, really, this is what we experience, this is the same M.O. for black males. From all around Jim Crow South. Criminalization of black males. I just wanted to get on the elevator and go down, and because you're fearful, and went, and, and just about to have a heart attack, that's your problem. Go get a counselor, why are you afraid of me? I'm just trying to go up or down. So I gotta be concerned, oh, jump off the elevator because they get on? Or make sure, don't speak to them, I can approach a commissioner and have a conversation? And especially when you know this guy is passionate, he speaks with his hands, you're gonna use that against me so I have to act like you want me to act? Are you really, you see the situation you put black males in, and it's terrible, and racism is rampant in Sacred County. And I'm concerned because now I'm recruited to at the college, and we, we have students from Detroit, our Detroit prom, we got, we got more African-American students on the campus now than we had in a hundred years. In a hundred years, so what, I'm afraid for them. Because they look at someone, then they're gonna call the police on, on, on the, on the male black student. I'll be back to finish this.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Here, oh, sorry. Ms. Jane Har- Howard?
Yes, I'm Jane Howard, live in Clyde. And I'd just like to say that I never was involved in community government, or coming to these board meetings or anything, until I was approached about the issue on removing fluoride from the water, because I'd been involved with dentistry for many years. And through that association, I came to be acquainted with Kevin Watkins. And, and I'm just very impressed with this gentleman, and he's very knowledgeable, he's very passionate about his involvement with the community. I think you've made a, a big mistake with a censure or your, your action from the board. Our community needs more diversity, and I think we can all see from this room that we don't have a lot of diverse engagement with the community, and we don't want to discourage that. Through the years, my involvement, working in Haiti, and a different culture, I came to a different understanding on race. Very often, and I, I also lived in Japan for four years, I came to understand what it's like to be a minority. And I was discriminated against in Japan. And so unless you live in somebody else's skin, you can't know what their feelings are, and how they come out into the world every day prepared to be attacked. And I think you said the very words yourself, Mr. Fletcher, that the word assassination is not a crime. He, he was, he was expressing that word, and you know that he didn't mean it as, as a violent attack on anybody. So I think that right there should tell you that he doesn't deserve any action from the board. If anything, he deserves more encouragement to participate with the board and the community, and express what it's like to be a minority in this community. So I, I just felt like I had to say that and express my First Amendment right. And I'm glad that this has introduced me to our local government, and how we all need to become more involved with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no further public speakers, we'll move on to updates, number four, does anyone have any updates? Doesn't appear anyone does. Number five, conceptual initiatives, there are none, there is also no old business. Number seven, new business, A, Vital Records Software, Apex County Clerk.
Make a- Send it full board.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, Canvas Board Appointments.
Make a motion and send it full board.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, Contract Extension, Cutting Edge Lawn and Snow Services LLC, Snow Plo and Salt Services, Addendum B.
Make a motion, send it full board.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, Resolution 2524, imposing 2025 December property tax levy.
Motion, send it full board.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, Assessing Services Agreement, Port Huron Township.
Make a motion, send it full board.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. F, 2023 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Grant Award.
Make a motion and send that to full board.
Support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G, Equalization Department Manning Table Change Request.
Motion, send it full board.
Support.
Discussion?
Yes, I read through that, and it's a pretty substantial increase, and, but from my understanding, the entire cost is gonna be covered from Port Huron Township?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Can I ask a question, though? I, I think it was in June when we created a deputy position for them, and then we eliminated an appraiser two. And now we wanna bring on another appraiser, why didn't we just keep the person on staff?
Our equalization director is here, so he can answer those questions for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so when we eliminated, eliminated the appraiser two position, that was create the deputy director position. And that's because, just with other duties and that, that we have taken on the different tax law and- different tax law and different, through the state tax commission, what has been put on to the assessors' plate or on to the equalizations' plate, it's just, there's a lot more that we're responsible for now. We do assessing for Marine City, Algonac, City of St. Clair, and now renewing this contract, renew the Port Huron Township contract. There's just a lot more oversight needed, so that's why the deputy director position was created. And at that time, we were still negotiating with Port Huron Township with what services they needed. So that's, at that time, I did not know where this contract was going to go. So that's why we eliminated that position and created the deputy, and we went that route. Now that we've had the conversation with Port Huron Township, with this contract requiring more staff time, more duties that we're responsible for, prior to, in the past, Port Huron Township, they supplied an assistant, we'll say, to take care of the day-to-day activities. We were only there a day, two days a week. Now we're gonna be there four days a week. And then also, it's gonna take more time from my staff with other duties that we're responsible for. So, that's now why I'm requesting that we have another appraiser three full-time position added, which will be covered by this contract.
Okay, thank you for that. Sorry, that's all.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Did we have two motions?
Are we in discussion?
You had a motion in a second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H, Resolution 2527, Collective Bargaining Agreement, St. Clair County Library System, Employees Final Action.
I'll make a motion to approve for final action.
Support.
Any discussion? I do see that Ms. Arnold is here, if anyone has any questions for her from the library.
Do you think we need a roll call on this? No?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, any other Ways and Means Matters? Hearing none, moving to number nine, there's no information, only 10, receiving file packets.
Make a motion?
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?